Good evenings. Calling the Marlington Local School District Board of Education, meeting to order Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. Let's stand for the pledge.
What begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Here.
Mrs. Krepko?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Swift?
Here.
Reading of the mission statement, Mrs. Kathy Krepko.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda for the June 23rd, 2022 meeting?
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we put additions and corrections back on here, as it used to be on here? And I've also, I heard today that the Nexus settlement has been announced, and I'd like to move to add discussion and an update on the Nexus settlement to the agenda.
Are we aware of any information about that?
We do have some information at this time.
Solid concrete that you could report on?
I have an email that I can officially say is concrete, from Allen Harrell.
Okay. So we add that to Old Business. That would be Old Business, number two. Nexus Pipeline Update. Okay, so that's, I was just gonna ask that, I think so.
Needs a second. I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second it, just for the point of discussion. Okay. Are you prepared to discuss it? I know you said you have an email with some concrete information, but are you prepared for us to discuss anything about it right now?
We can only, I can only discuss what was emailed from Allen Harrell at this time. I mean, not further than that, I won't go, we can't discuss anymore because the details aren't there.
Okay.
Okay. So the amended motion to include that change in the agenda. Call the roll, please. Patty?
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Public participation, whereas, did anyone sign up for the, that portion of our meeting? The public participation?
No.
No. Okay, Folk Scholarship Awards, Mr. Swisher.
Okay, good evening. This is the highlight, couple highlights this evening. We're gonna start with our Folk Scholarship Award winners. Let me give you, for those of you that are not familiar with the Folk Scholarship, Richard and Bertie Folk were residents in the New Baltimore area, and Mrs. Folk was a former teacher at Marlboro. She was married in 1941, she had no children, and when they passed away, they donated $500,000 from their estate in the death of the honor's wife when she passed away. The intent of the donation, or the, was the scholarship that they built was to benefit children in Marlington. So this has been going on for a while. So the Folk Scholarship Committee did get together and look at the candidates, and we have three candidates that are going to be awarded tonight, a check for $2,500. So this, this is, will greatly benefit them and their education, and we're looking forward to see where they go from there. And we have two of those people here tonight, so we're gonna celebrate them by bringing them up here, because this is just an outstanding opportunity from the board and the Folk Scholarship to recognize these students. So our first student we're going to bring up and give him his award is Alec Goodwin. And our second award winner tonight for the Folk Scholarship that is here is Taryn Osick. I just wanna give a nice round of applause to these, these fine two ladies and gentlemen. They've done an excellent job, and we look forward to seeing what they hold in the future. On top of that, part of the Folk Scholarship, the nice thing about this scholarship is, most scholarships are built for seniors. Okay, so you kind of apply for these scholarships and you move forward. The way the Folk Scholarship's designed, and this was the intent from the family, was this is something that you guys can actually continue to apply for all the way through college and continue to get funding to support your education. So, you know, as, as people out there that are watching or listening, please understand, if you're a Marlington alumni and you have any interest in the Folk Scholarship, this is something you might want to take a look into. So again, I want to say congratulations, and thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, track state champions, Mr. Swisher.
She's brought it all up there.
Okay, we get to talk about something else that's just pretty, pretty amazing. We, we've had just such an outstanding year athletically, on top of just academic arts and different various activities, which I will speak on just here, actually probably next, just some highlights, some of the highlights of the year. So I'm gonna bring these four gentlemen up here right now. All right, so we have Noah Graham, Liam Blake, Colin Cernansky, okay? Make sure we're all ready to go. And Cohen, I'm sorry, Cohen, I apologize, and Cohen Boyce, I apologize. So these four obviously had an outstanding cross-country season, and they had goals and ambitions for track, which were ambitious and paid off. So I'm just gonna kind of, we wanted to bring them and congratulate them, because, you know, in a district our size, you know, it's hard, we don't get a lot of state champions. And right now, you're looking at four state champions, which is pretty amazing in our division, because we have an extremely difficult division to get down to Columbus. So I can tell you what happened here. So we got, we got these four running the four-by-800. Okay, they are state champions. They ran that in seven minutes, forty-nine seconds, .66. That is a school record, which is just absolutely amazing. Then, you know, so I can't say anything more, except for the fact that, I don't know if you guys know what an 800 is, so they each have to run the track twice. So each one of these guys had to run around the track twice, and to do that in seven minutes and forty-nine seconds is very impressive, and to break a school record is great. So I want to give them a round of applause for that. Then we have another state champion, Colin Cernansky. Not only was he a state champion in the four-by-800, he was also a state champion in the individual mile. So that is four laps around the track. Colin ran that in four minutes, fourteen seconds, .18, which is also a school record. So those of you that, if you know the 5,280 feet, I think, is in a mile, I'm not a big runner, but I say my mile time's about nine minutes on a good day. Ten would be a good day, four minutes is, that's basically a full sprint. So that's not an easy task. So it was impressive to watch, and I enjoyed watching them, so I can't say enough, so I want to give a round of applause for Colin, two-time state champion. They had an opportunity to go and got an invite to the New Balance Outdoor Nationals. So you have teams from all over the country competing. These four individuals placed fourth, so anybody in the top six is considered an All-American. So they placed fourth in the four-by-1600. So these four individuals ran that in seventeen minutes, thirty-nine seconds, .25. Placing fourth made them, you got four All-Americans based on how they ran. So I want to give them applause on that. I'm not done, almost. Also at the New, at the down there, New Balance Nationals, these four ran in the distance medley relay, which by the way, I figured I'm pretty savvy when it comes to track. I had to ask, what is the distance medley relay? They did it sixth place, so again, All-American status. They did it in ten minutes, twelve seconds, .91. Also a school record. Everything they have done is a school record. But to explain the distance medley relay, who was first leg? The first leg ran a 1,200 meters. Second leg runs a 400. Third leg runs an 800. And then obviously, the last leg runs a mile. So it's a little bit of a change in pace and how you go then. So running that in ten minutes, twelve seconds is very impressive. So these four individuals have just achieved beyond any expectation that I, that I could have had, you know, as watching them. I've known them for almost their entire, all thirteen years they've been here, some of them left. So I just want to say congratulations to these four, and good luck in your futures, and we look forward to seeing what's happening. And I have cards from us and the board for you guys. One more round of applause, thank you.
Yes. Presentation, Mr. Swisher.
All right, I asked the board, if they didn't mind, just for, in my, as I'm subbing in for Dr. Mike this month, oh, I want to excuse, I apologize. You guys, at this portion of the meeting, if there's anybody wants to be excused, get out of here. I know it's a nice evening, go enjoy it. Congratulations to you guys, I apologize, I started rambling here before you guys even got a chance to go. Okay, so Dr. Mike, Dr. Mike and myself, the administrative team, obviously, he's, he's been here, he's made various presentations or different things. I kind of just wanted to switch the tempo up a little bit this month, kind of give you an idea of where the administration team and I have, have talked, and some temper, and some ideas to move us forward, as when Dr. Mike returns. The one thing I wanted, the couple things I want to talk about, I will be short here. When I say reasons to celebrate, as you said, it's, it's hard to put in perspective a district our size and all the good things our five buildings do together. And I'm not sure the board or the community is quite aware, and I could not possibly list them all, but I can touch base on some of them. And we talk about those reasons to celebrate, and I'm not gonna read them off, but, you know, our elementaries have multiple highlights. On a curriculum side, we did a lot of unique and different things. Renee Kaylee, our curriculum director, being new to the role this year, had, had her hands full. She, we had some expectations set out for her to really target our K, one, two, and even our three, specifically in some curricular areas. On top of that, we had to adopt a new math curriculum, which took months of time. Okay? And then our, between our principals and how we worked, this is just something that, you know, from a curriculum side, they did a nice job. The entire elementary staff came together, the teachers came together, and they worked well together. Also, another elementary highlights, obviously, I just, I couldn't touch them all. So I just, there's a lot of things our buildings do. So you're not aware of things they do monthly, things that happen during the year, or if you see something up there and you say, hey, I don't know what this is, I'd like to learn more about it or what it is, please reach out and let me know. Okay, I just, that was just, it was, it's just amazing, all the different activities that happen in our elementary buildings. And it doesn't necessarily mean it happens in one, it happens in the, in the bulk of our buildings, all three. There are some uniqueness in each building, which is the way it should be, but at the same time, they're very similar. At the middle school, obviously, I just want to, it's hard, I was talking to Mr. Evinich, and it's hard to really pin down all the different things that they do. So we just highlighted a couple of those things. And not to go overboard, you know, obviously, the, you know, the orientations he does, the community day celebration, it's fitness day, it's pep rallies, he does assemblies, he's, and they're actively involved, and, you know, their staff is actively involved in meeting at least three to five times a week in so many different types of academic areas that you just can't sit there and listen to, but I just wanted to touch base. At the high school, and this is the probably the most difficult one, I could honestly probably pick every month to talk about the high school. Our seniors, you know, earned over $620,000 in scholarships and grants this year. That's just an amazing amount, just for our senior class. Thirty-seven honors diplomas, one career tech honors diploma, forty-seven academic honors, were Purple Star school. And then all the things that they do, usually every month, there's something going on that's exciting at the high school. And it just continues. This place is really outside of this month, and maybe a little bit of next month is probably the two slowest times in this building, but if you're ever, if you're around here in the mornings, it's not slow. There's still a lot going on. Athletically, as I said, it was a great year. In the fall, we had four EBC champions, our boys' cross-country, our boys' soccer, girls' golf, and volleyball. Obviously, we had the sectional champion in golf, two district champions, and a regional and state champion with our boys' cross-country. Winter sports, we had two EBC champions with our cheerleading, girls' basketball, and two sectional champions with our girls' basketball and swimming. It was just, it was a good fall, a good winter. Then you get into the spring, again, two EBC champions, baseball and softball, two sectional champions, baseball and softball, and then you talk about our state champions and track, and we're just talking about our state champions. We're not talking about all the other accolades that our girls' and boys' track do. I just put the state champions. This track doesn't have, like, individual differences like that unless you go to the Again, high school, band and choir, our side, fall and winter, spring band concerts, their holidays, if you have not been to their core performances, their senior showcase, they go to Cedar Point, their band and solo, there's a lot of different evening events with our, with our band and choir. I urge you, when you get things to do that with the band and choir, to come out and, and see what we offer, because it's, they're pretty amazing shows. I know, I feel like I'm moving fast, but it's, it was really, I just wanted to kind of talk about some of the highlights in a, you know, and just briefly for a few minutes. The second part was, you know, the administration team and I, we've just talked, you're talking about how to move Marlington forward, so we're kind of setting into place into the fall. You know, I firmly believe, we firmly believe that there needs to be planned meetings to communicate with our stakeholders, okay? We just, we got a little bit away from it because of COVID. I think we need to get back into it. We need members with children that are at Marlington Local Schools just as much as we need members without children at Marlington Local Schools, because I've been in this district now for seventeen years. I can't say for a fact the exact percentage of families that live in this district without kids, but I'm thinking it's somewhere around eighty percent. That's significant. So we need to know what's going on. We got a lot of business partners, we got a lot of religious organizations, we got our township trustees, and then obviously, the most important in my mind is our certified classified staff members. How, you know, how much do we communicate? And COVID took a lot of that away. So, you know, I feel, we feel as a team, this is something that needs to come back, so that's something we're kind of setting for the tone for the fall. I just want to kind of make people aware, there's, those things happen for conversation pieces moving forward. What's our why? Why? I only got two slides left, you guys should be okay. Why, why, why do our team feel this way? Well, first of all, it's increasing transparency between us and the community. We need to gain input. Okay? That input needs to come from the standpoint of educational platforms and future programming. I mean, it's not a secret. Our community is somewhat divided on specific issues. We need to discuss that. How's that gonna look for us moving forward? What is that gonna look like? Some of those conversations are gonna be okay, some of those conversations are gonna be hard, but we need to step up and have those conversations and be very open about it. That's kind of the rationale behind that. And obviously, part of it is, we have a renewal levy in November. We're gonna have basically what I would equate a first reading tonight, okay, and then we'd have our second to move forward, but, you know, this, this levy's been renewed by our, by our community, you know? Every time it's come up, I don't want that to change. We have to be very clear that this isn't a new tax, this is a renewal. And we need to discuss, you know, what that renewal money brings in, because this is a significant renewal. Okay? And it's important to the functioning of our district. So that's kind of our why with this whole, this whole reason. The now, what's going on? Everyone wants to know, what's, what's going on? Well, you know what I mean? This board, you know, we, the, being the board and the administration, that, you know, we're talking about, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible, the community is saying you need to be fiscally responsible, so we're committed to making decisions that are best for kids, why also being fiscally responsible? So as administration from our side, we're, we have to, you have to find that balance. It doesn't mean that what we recommend to the board is maybe what everybody agrees with, but we have to find that balance. So what's going on right now is, we're, we're doing an analysis of our current resignations. It's not, it's very normal that teachers or staff choose to leave districts for multiple reasons. As we do exit interviews, I'm gonna, you know, we, those will come out why, but it's not uncommon. But at the same time, we have, we have a lot of resignations right now. So we have to be very mindful of how we move forward. Obviously, we need to do analysis of our district expenditures. What are we doing? We have a lot of contracts that we do, we have a lot of different things that we operate under that's been normal, and right now, we're not necessarily in normal times. So those are the things that are gonna be happening this summer that we're gonna be, you know, from the board's standpoint, you know, and from the administration's standpoint, we're gonna be having those discussions. When I say the examination of the district wants and needs, I didn't know how to really word that, because everybody has wants and everybody has needs. Okay? So that's the hard part. When you're having those discussions with your principals, your principal's job is to protect their staff. It's the administration, this is Central's office job to determine what that want and need is, and how it best fits, what model this community is, is looking for moving forward. And that's not easy. I mean, I'll be very serious, it's not easy to have those discussions. That's where we're at right now. We're just in the examination period, but there's gonna be some very difficult decisions coming up here soon. That's where we're at. And ultimately, our goal is to be fiscally prudent. And that's, and that's where we're at. It's our goal, from the administration side, the treasurer, myself, Dr. Mike, whoever, and our administrative team, is to give good suggestions or make a recommendation that also is best for what we feel the community, and best for us to be financially sound moving forward. So that's what we're working on right now this summer. I'm not gonna get into the weeds with details, because it's not fair, because right now, we're in the midst, June is your biggest month of, of teachers leaving and going. By mid-July, it pretty settles. So we would be in really a much better position to be very more specific on what those resignations look like, district expenditures, where we're moving forward into, in, into the fall. So when I wrap up here and say, I said, it's not, I don't want to sound like it's gloom and gloom, I don't think that at all, I just think this is normal things we do in the summer. That's why I kind of know and point that out. We wrapped up the year, we closed down June 6th or June 9th, okay? We're on June 23rd, so we're about two weeks into our summer. We have a whole lot of highlights that this district did, and a whole lot of amazing gains that our staff and students have done. Their achievements are amazing. So it's time to start noticing those achievements, at the same time, it's our job in, in Central Office to kind of sit back and say, okay, it's not slow, it's, this is our busy season, because you know what, we gotta figure out as things move around, and how as teachers leave and teacher, teachers come in, how we best meet our needs moving forward, knowing, okay, we, we have a lot to talk about coming up. So I appreciate your time tonight, and we'll move on.
Thank you. Next up is Old Business Extended Days Correction.
Sorry. All right. Get down here. All right. Okay, so I'd like to talk about here, we'd like to recommend the motion to approve the revised extended days shown as Exhibit A.
Sumo.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Is this similar or the same as last year?
Uh, no. So in the previous, previous meeting, we approved, you, you guys, the five board members approved the extended days. In that list, we ended up losing eleven. We were trying to, as part of our job, is to be fiscally prudent, we tried to, you know, take some extended days off, you know, because that's, every penny counts. So we ended up looking at losing about eleven extended days, is what it was approved. As that was approved, when we met with our central, our administrators, they said, hey, there was some, I don't want to say just, the clarification wasn't all there, so we had to readjust the day. So the eleven days that were removed, is still eleven days removed, we just switched around. We just switched around the days, in a nutshell. So basically, the middle school guidance counselor was always 15 days. We originally moved five. We just brought it back. Okay, we didn't add any. The middle school dean of students, we made it zero, which really, we shouldn't have done. It was always six. Okay, so we just brought it back. We didn't add any. Where we made the switch was, is, you know, our ag teacher position itself was riffed. The position was riffed. So really, the 15 days were also part of that. What, what we then did was went and spoke with the combined, the career tech person that is kind of taking over the ag natural resources. So now it's a natural resource teacher, but there is some ag pieces into there. So we came back and, and she said, you know what, we're going to start at four. We kind of had a conversation about how that would look. If we have to come back and revise that for her or look at something else she does, we'll do that. But based on how her duties are going to work out, that's how we, we came up with that. So still left us at 11. So the change in the, the days itself are the same. It's just, we kind of re-allocated them different, if that helps.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Number two, the Nexus Pipeline update.
Dan?
I can start it.
Would, would you mind just reading the email?
No. I'm going to give a copy of the board present. I, I only have two copies here. So there was an email that came this morning at 11:41 from Alan Har, Alan Harrell. It was also a group email to anybody that affects, you know, when you're talking about, it was basically a tax estimate, so you're talking about the Nexus Pipeline, okay? He said, "Dear colleagues, I participated this morning in a call with Tax Commissioner McLean, along with key staff from our office and other several, other county auditors. During this call, he announced the settlement of the Board of Tax Appeals case with Nexus in the amount of $950 million statewide value for everybody. Later today, I will receive any breakdown of our county and update the spreadsheet accordingly. Full payment of all unpaid taxes is expected. I would anticipate that arriving sometime in October, and we'll work to get that to you, even though that's outside of our normal distribution cycle." So in a nutshell, Patty and I talked about this. It was one that we were just going to bring up, you know, I was going to bring up a work session in July, which will still come up in my, in my, at the end of the, at the board meeting here, but, you know, she spoke with Alan Harrell today. You know, Alan said, "We don't have concrete numbers. We can't say Marlinson is getting this," is what I can honestly say. We don't know. But what Alan said is that, you know, "As soon as I get those concrete numbers together, you know, would you mind?" You know, he goes, "If you don't mind," he goes, "I'll put together a presentation specifically for Marlinson." And he goes, "Then I will come and present it." So I think, you know, Patty said, "No, that would be fantastic." So we're just waiting for Alan Harrell to get back to us at this time. I mean, we all kind of knew that, we knew there was going to be some settlement at some point. We still don't know the exact figures, but any figure's going to be beneficial to our district. So I guess we're kind of excited to see how this pans out. We're going to know here real soon. I mean, we're in June, so I'm going to say within the next month or two, we're going to have more concrete numbers to share with the board. And with Alan Harrell coming, I think that'll give us a chance to, you know, for sure, based on his, his expert opinion, what we're going to get and then how that panned out. So there's really no speculation there.
Okay, thank you. Could you forward that to the board members then, that copy that email?
I can.
And, uh,
Yeah.
I guess if we're going to have a work session in July, I'd only ask that it be after the 12th, because I'm going to be out of town.
You're fine. It was at the end. It's not on there. I was just going to make a suggestion here and new business about it, but it's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, C, New Business Bullying Report.
Okay, New Business. Every year, twice a year. So in the January, at the end of the year, we're required by law to post on our website, obviously, you know, any bullying instances for a school district. As you can see in the attachment, it's just, it's a semi-annual bullying report. It's in compliance with the Ohio Vice Code, and that's what's a, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, a new business. That is not a vote.
Right. Go on.
Number two, the Cooperative Purchase, Bus Purchasing Program. So what we're doing is recommending the motion to approve the resolution as presented for the Stark County Schools Council of Government Cooperative Advertising and receiving bids for integrated school bus units in Exhibit C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
After we get the bids, are we obligated to purchase the buses?
We are not. As you see at the bottom of the resolution, the hard copy I gave you is resolution does not obligate the district to purchase the buses. This is just giving them as normal, the county, if we would need buses, they would do the bidding for us as they did for the, the three different types of buses we look at. They give us the quotes.
Okay.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Okay, number three, the Health Department Contract. So I recommend the motion to approve the Stark County Health Department contract as shown in Exhibit D.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this the same cost as last year?
Okay, so last year, we, we basically, last year, they do it, they break it down in two ways. You'll see in this contract. So I looked at last year's contract. So last, they, basically, they did, last year, they did $38 per hour, not to exceed 1,365 hours is the way our contract works with the Stark County Health Department nurses, which came to a cost of $51,870. Okay, so that's basically for the equivalent of one nurse. This year, they went up $2. So they're at $40 an hour with the same of more than 1,365 hours for a total cost of $54,600. So you're looking at the difference cost of roughly between $2 and $3,000, closer to $3,000. Very similar.
This is a contract that's supported with our S R funds.
Okay. And, and are there any advantages, disadvantages to hiring in-house versus through the E S C?
I don't know if there's any advantage or disadvantages. The cost, the cost wise was,
I'm sorry, the Health Department, not the E S C?
Yes, the Health Department. So this has nothing, this is outside of the E S C. The only other option we would have would be to hire our own private nurse or, you know, contract out with, say, Akron Children's or someone else. I know Dr. Mike was looking into that at that point. I don't, I don't know what happened from there. I mean, I have no issue with moving forward. If that's something to look at, that we could just make a comparison, then I could bring it back to you, the best options, that's fine. But I know how, I, talking with other superintendents, I know that not everybody uses Stark County Health Department, but I don't think their number's unreasonable for the service we get for a year.
So this isn't something that you need voted on absolutely tonight, then, if we could look at other options?
Well, it's, I'm going to say it was supposed to be voted on probably last month, because the Health Department wanted to know what was going on, to be honest with you. It kind of, I read through the emails and said, oh, okay. So I made sure that was on there to, you know.
Is this the same person we had this year?
The same two. They each split it. So it's half. So you have, you have Bridgette and Denise.
How does that break down between the buildings? Are they spending equal time in each building, or are they stationed at one?
They rotate buildings, so just really, I mean, their, their main job is a little more difficult because of COVID. Because originally, when the year started, we were, we were contact tracing. We had to send things to the nurses. We had to sing things through the county on a weekly basis. We had to, so they were part of that. So that made a difference. But the majority of the time, their main thing is keeping our, looking at all our kids as emergency medicals and make sure they're accurate. Our shot records are accurate. Our, you know, we do have instances in all our buildings where things happen, where they need to be part of that. What, they're also part of the training. So we have, you know, various individuals in each building that, it would vary from a diabetic to, you know, an EpiPen to, it's just, it, I can't say specifically, but those things, you know, and then they'll also do our vision screening. By law, we have to do vision screenings at specific grade levels. They have to be involved in that. So that's where I am on that.
So we have one nurse all the time and?
Technically, there's somebody here, yes. So they are not, we don't have two people here full-time, so they're good, we like to halftime at the equivalent of that.
Right.
Well, I see here that this letter's dated April 25th. In the future, could we have stuff, you know, forwarded to the board ahead of time so that it's not a decision that has to be made on the spot? Because it's showing here that this starts the 1st of July.
It is, and I think that's the reason. I can only speak for what I stepped into to, to sub this out for right now, for what I'm doing. So moving forward, that would, I'll make note, make sure that happens a little bit more efficiently for you.
Okay.
I apologize at that. I just, it's words this.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, four one.
Okay. All right, four, Levy Renewal Resolution. Recommend the motion to approve the levy renewal resolution as shown in Exhibit E.
Okay, is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So what I can tell you is, obviously, this is a renewal levy. It's not a new tax. So this will be that we have to send this off to basically get it back. They'll send back a certificate with the rates, and we'll go from there. So what I can tell you that's factual, which, you know, Patty can verify this here too with me, but we're looking at, you know, you guys approved the five-year forecast in May. So this levy renewal, again, not a new tax, very important to us. If we pass this in November, and our community's been very supportive, and we can't thank them enough about that, that's going to bring in, you know, $723,821 with that passage, because it comes in two sections. The total worth or cost that we're going to get from that levy is 1.3 million, or 100, 1.342544. Okay, so usually, in the first half of a levy, they give you about 53% of that money, and then the second half, you're getting about 47% of that money. So, you know, obviously, it's, uh, $700,000, $723,821 is a, is a significant amount of money to our district. And we appreciate that this levy was passed years ago, and that's part of the reason why we want to, in the fall, make sure that we are being, you know, letting the community know where this is and, and, oh, it's not a new tax.
And is this the same as it's been on the ballot in previous years?
Correct.
No changes?
No changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Okay, so this is, uh, normally, in this time, June, July, we do have students, we do transportation in lieu. So I'm recommending the motion to approve the transportation request as presented in accordance with the Ohio Vice Code 3327.01 for the 2022-23 school year. Reimbursement amount to be determined by the state.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we know approximately what that is per pupil?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
$538.55.
Now, does that change if there's multiple in one household, or is it per pupil? Either way, do you know?
That is per person.
Per person, okay.
And this is by law. They have that right to do that. The state sets the reimbursement amount. That changes every year, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Lunch prices next year. So recommend the motion to approve the following student lunch prices for the 2022-2023 school year as presented in Exhibit F.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? This has been pretty flat for a little while, right?
Well, we, we've been, we, we've, as I stated in the last meeting, when I, it was either last meeting or the meeting before, when I presented the, the pupil service update, obviously, the, the food service side, I kind of still, I oversee that this year on that side of it too. So we have been, for the last two years, the entire state has been free breakfast and lunch. That hasn't been our call. That's just what the state has made the decision to cause. At that time, I said, I did not recommend any movement on lunch prices at that time, because the state was determining if they were going to continue to move forward with that or not. So there was no reason to have that discussion. The state has since come out and said, no, you know, we're, we're done giving away, they're not giving away, that is the wrong phrase, we're done supporting the cause of free breakfast and free lunch for every student in the state of Ohio. So with that being said, obviously, we had to go, um, look at our lunch prices where they were at. So if you can see in the attachment, I have our previous price, okay, where they were at. And then obviously, you know, with inflation, and I, and I say that, don't say that lightly, there is supply chain issues, and I don't like, I hear that all the time, and it drives me, it's very irritating to hear, but it's an actual thing. There are shortages in gas. All these things play a factor. Now realistically, when we talk to, and I talked to some other superintendents about lunch prices, I talked to some other food service people, you talk to the county, they're going to tell you that really, you could be looking at a 30% increase in food. We can't raise our lunch prices 30%. You know, we got to find that. So we went up about, milk did go up 10 cents. It just went up. It's really, the cost of milk is the cost of milk. The rest, we went up a quarter, is what we did. So, and, so we, that means, and then obviously, so if people out there don't have the attachment, elementary lunch would be $2.75, middle school and high school would be $3. Breakfast is $1.50. Now, the reason I have in there, September to December will be free, because we do get a reimbursement, regardless of free and reduced lunch, or if you're, if you just pay $1.50, you get a reimbursement. So right now, we're feeding all our elementary kiddos, our middle school and high school. So the suggestion would be is we continue to feed them for free, because if we don't, very little come in. We would like to evaluate at December if we're actually making a, you know, a profit or not, based on giving those students, every student a breakfast, versus just limiting it to a cost. And then in December, come January, if we're not, if we're losing any money, then we're going to go to making, making the recommendation of, you know, no longer will it be free. But I'm kind of steering, heading this direction. My recommendation to you for that is because there's, area districts are also looking at the same option. So I just kind of said that, and I talked to the county, and they said, no, it's not a bad idea. And I think it's good for our kids, because we feed them all right now. So for those of you who don't know, I mean, we give everybody a, so that's, I would like to see if we're actually breaking even or not based on that. And I can give you that answer come December.
Do we receive federal funding for school lunches?
We do.
And I don't believe you, but if you do, could you get us how much that is?
So if you look down there at the bottom on the thing, it says the reimbursement rate, I mean, generally, they told me for 21-22 was like $2.60 per meal. So that would be if you qualified for a specific meal. Obviously, that, the 22-23 hasn't been released.
That, that's federal, or is that a mix of federal and state?
That's federal. So, you know, it's very important for our district to, you know, when we, if you remember, we still do it. You get the paper. Your child comes home from school, and you get the, the free and reduced lunch form, and they say, we want everybody to fill it out. I mean, I'm trying to, I hope that, I guess, to be a little bit more transparent, to understand that the lunches that we give our students and the papers that the parents fill out is not just about getting food. It affects our federal funding. So when we're talking about our title grants, our IDEA grants, our Title II grants, our Title IV grants, all this is tied to school lunches or the free and reduced lunch form. So, you know, a lot of parents say, no, I'm never going to qualify for this. Waste my time. They throw it away. It doesn't matter. Fill it out. So we, we need to be very cognate of this, and we need to really let parents know, and we're going to try to push this pretty heavy, because they've been in COVID. They're so used to just sending their kids to school. So we're going to really try real hard this fall to be, communicate that consistently, to try to get those forms in, because it's only going to help our district. If that gives you.
I, I guess my only concern with the federal funding is, I heard that there's a new federal mandate that requires any school that receives federal funding for lunches to have, to allow students that identify as whatever gender, use the gender of their choice. And that wipes out the school having any, any dis- as whatever gender, use the gender of their choice. And that wipes out the school having any decision in that matter.
Well, I honestly can't give you a key.
You're saying we should reject federal funding?
No, I'm saying we should analyze the situation. That's why I'm asking how much it is.
Well, that I don't know because I don't have that, that exactly, that, that number in front of me because I haven't been given that number. And I would not, from there, from that aspect, I can probably, let me look into that and get back to you personally. I can give you a call and give you that answer on that aspect, but we do need to kind of approve the lunches going in, you know, at these prices. Because, you know, we need to make some type of, that's my recommendation right now and go from there. And I'll give you that answer, Josh.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero.
Back in here. All right, summer grant rates. So recommend the motion to approve the following summer grant rates as presented in exhibit G.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These are summer grant rates. So we have grants specifically that we have to use for summer. Or I want to say not for, it's supposed to be for summer programming in particular. And it's, it's a significant amount. So it's, what we did is we basically, what I did was I took a relative comparison of our area school districts of where they're at, when they, when they're looking at paying teachers, tutors, drivers, cooks, paraprofessionals and all that. So we just make a grant list and they're all time slipped employees. So it's not, you know, if they work an hour, that's what they get. If they don't work at all, they get nothing. But, and I'll give you the example, we only have one cook. We have one head cook. We have, I think, three drivers, but we have multiple drivers we hired because they rotate. We have one secretary. We have one summer custodian. And we have one Linda Thorpe. She's an outlier because she's a grounds person. Our certified teachers and tutors are, they're obviously, there's, you guys approved those last, last month. But we did not approve this, the grant rates of what, how we pay them. So I just put that in the sheet to make that a little bit more clear.
This is separate from the migrant program?
This is, this has nothing to do with the migrant program, correct.
And it's an ODA, ODE grant?
It's the ESER funds.
It's the ESER.
Oh, it's ESER.
S, out of any grant we got from ESER, ESER one, two, three, or four, 20% of that grant money had to go to summer programming, after-school programming, student, the type of activities. Basically, summer school's the biggie, you know, on that aspect of it. So, you know, it's not as easily said as saying, hey, you have this grant money, you can do it. Some of it, you know, they're very specific and earmarked. We have surveys we have to fill out and prove how we spend the money and what we do, just very similar to our other grants. The ESER just gave us a little bit more flexibility than per se a title or a title or an IDEA that was directly geared towards special education or things like that.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero.
Okay, recommend the motion to approve the acceptance of Thomas Perez Latore, Latore, from Spain as an exchange student for the 2022-2023 school year as presented in exhibit H.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass five zero.
All right, last one, new business, out-of-state field trips. Recommend the motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the choral group to Orlando, Florida, March 22, 2023 to March 26, 2023, as shown in exhibit I.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is a trip to Disney?
This is a trip to Disney.
Okay. Are there other venues that we could look at possibly in the future? You know, I currently am not a fan of Disney's agenda of indoctrination at this point in time.
Once.
Would that be up to moving the teacher that put that trip together?
Moving forward, I will speak to Mr. Montney about that. I will get back to him that, but I will speak with him. I do know that this is, this is paid for by student fundraisers and the parents. That's, he told me that's, I would say, almost 100% of the trip. But there, if there's additional cost or something else like that, that comes from the choir boosters, but that typically doesn't happen very often. He said the bulk of this trip is paid for through student fundraising and parents for almost every single student.
Are they going there to perform?
They go there to perform.
To perform, okay.
They participate, on the paper, on the attachment I gave you, it says down there the objective of the trip. It says, you know, participate in the festival at Disney. This is an adjudicated event and allows for our choir, you know, to learn and compete with schools from around the country, is what he said.
But they've, they've done this quite a few years in a row.
They have, you know, you know, they do stay consistent with what they like to do and there's nothing wrong with also looking outside the box. So I will look into both.
And part of that is for marching band and for chorus. Disney has a program that invites students from all over the country to come there and participate. It's, it's an honor for companies do that. Don't disagree with Josh. But until there's something else, you know, it's probably one of the best programs there may have in the country.
So, no, but we'll look into it. That's not a problem.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero.
Four one.
Four one.
Four one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I apologize, four one, yes.
Okay, treasurer's agenda, Dr. Main.
The first item on the agenda would be to recommend that you approve the minutes for the June 16, 2022 meeting that is attached.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy? Okay, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The second one, the second item are the financial report for the month.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the financial reports and overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending May 31st, 2022, as shown in exhibits K through M?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion? Just want to highlight some things.
Sure, thank you. The first attachment is the, the cash reconciliation, of course, and we did balance this month. The second one are a list of the checks that were issued this month. You'll see some scholarships, student scholarships in high school paid out. It's about some prom things. Everything else is pretty much normal. And the third one is your FENSOM. The very first line again would be your, at the end of the row, the last column would be your 001 general fund balance at the end of last month. And then you, if you look down to your 003 is your permanent improvement. That's the next one. That's your balance. And then almost at the bottom, 070 is your capital improvements fund. And that's the balance at the end of last month.
Can we read off the balances of those?
I'm sorry.
Can the, so the permanent improvement balance is currently 1.2 million?
I have one point, yeah, 1.2.
003?
Yep.
And capital projects is 872,665.
I have a different one.
What's that? Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 070, we have 515.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at current balance, not including the encumbrances, sorry.
And of course, your second page are your grants that are reimbursed.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The next, the next item to recommend are the amended resources and appropriations. They'll be the final ones for 2022. We made some adjustments. If you look at the first attachment, over/under revisions, that's bolded for June. Of course, we're being reimbursed a bit more for food. And then if you look back at your food service for budgeting, it's costing a bit more for food. So the only other difference that we really have is down on your 070. As we discussed, I believe, last month, we had some early collection on the NEXUS. We previously had not anticipated. So that is included for our revenues. The last one, we just had an 022 just to adjust that for some tournaments for our budgets. And those would be the only changes for this month.
Is there a motion to approve the final amended resources and appropriations for the fiscal year 2022 as presented in exhibits N and O?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and the discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The next item to recommend is to approve the estimated resources and we have a revision for this month for the two attachments.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the estimated resources for fiscal year 2023 as shown in exhibits P and Q?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and discussion?
The, the official certificate of estimated resources, those figures come from our tax budget, which we do early in the year. And of course, by now, we, we know some changes. So your revisions are just the updated amounts for those for next year.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The next one is our permanent appropriations. Every year, we pass permanent appropriations and we will revise them as we track our budget throughout the year. And that's in the attach.
So is there a motion to establish a permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2023 as shown in exhibit R?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We'll revise these once we have what our cash ending balance is for each fund. And of course, our appropriations from, or not our appropriations, I'm sorry, our encumbrances will, will roll over. And then we'll do some revisions.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The next one is to recommend that you approve the activity purpose clause and budget statements. These are for our activity funds. These are just estimations of what kind of fundraisers they're going to have and then, you know, how they're going to spend that. Is it going to be field trips or et cetera? And you just approve those revisions. So of course, and we know more now than we did in January because we have their activity purpose budgets.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the activity purpose clause and budget statements for the 2022-23 school year as presented in exhibit S?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy and second Jonathan, okay. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The next one is a funds transfer. And this is our transfer of our NEXUS funds from 001 to the 070 project fund. And at, we, we need to transfer 1,154,258.43.
Is there a motion to approve the fund transfer of 1,154,200, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, 1,154,258.43 from Fund 001 General Fund to Fund 070 Capital Projects Fund.
So moved.
Second.
So I'm going to jump in here. Obviously, the 070 Capital Improvement Fund, that's where anytime a NEXUS money comes in. So currently is, was just discussed previously, we have roughly a $515,000 balance in there. That would bring the total balance, you know, with this fund transfer to, you know, 1.6 million plus. Obviously, we pay twice a year to the loan lease project for the renovations at the elementaries that were currently done at roughly $773,000. Okay, so obviously, we, if we take $773,000 out of that, we still have a significant amount of money in the 070 fund. At the end of this meeting, I would, once we set the, the next board meeting date in July, I would also like to, my recommendation would be to set a, a boardwork session in July to have a discussion about the 070 fund. And I can come with some recommendations and some, hopefully, I think I have all my concrete numbers except for one. I'd like to have some specific numbers to you about some bigger areas in the district. We're not talking about small. We're talking about something significant. As you guys have had some discussion about the roof and we're looking at that, just as much as, you know, the different things at Lexington or Washington or Marlboro, whatever that may be, or the middle school. So just, you know, even doesn't have to be a long work session, but, you know, at least we have a significant amount of money here. So we need to at least make some recommendations of what to do with that, would be my suggestion.
Okay, and that, so that's including the overpayment that we discussed at the last meeting, the 1.154 million?
The early collection, yes.
The early collection, yeah. Sorry. And at that point, we had come to the conclusion that it was going to look like a smaller payment later on in the year. But given the settlement, that's probably not the case anymore.
Correct.
Correct. That's probably, well, that will change.
So we're going to get.
As soon as we have those numbers from Helen Harrell, we'll share those.
Which I think would be a good time of that work session to talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. or Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass five zero. The very last item on the agenda is to accept the donations. We have an anonymous donor to the high school for 100. Phil and Cindy Carly for the high school for 200. We have Anthony and Karen Humphries for $50 for the. We have Anthony and Karen Humphries for fifty dollars for the high school. And we have Tom and Kathy Kropko for the high school, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And lastly, we have Stephanie and Chris Locke High School for twenty-five dollars.
Is there a motion to accept donations?
Some of- Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to say that it's Carlisle on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just sorry to correct you.
Yes. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Question? Do Karen and Kathy have to abstain because they donated?
They may want to, just to be safe.
I don't know. It's ethics. I don't-
I don't think from a donation specifically, since it says that-
They're not getting money.
Okay.
Sometimes an auditor's choice.
Specifically says to the, obviously, the Marlin High School Academic Recognition Committee also, so.
Okay.
It won't, it won't hurt to abstain.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any conflict there.
Mark Ri, or, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Okay. Personnel. So number one, we'll go through these fairly quick, if we can here. Recommend the motion to approve the following certified retirement, as shown in Exhibit T. Melissa Leone, effective ten thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Number two, certified staff resignation. Recommend the motion to approve the following certified resignation as shown, certified staff resignations as shown in Exhibit Y, U through Y. Which is Jessica Collins, effective the end of school year, Robert Motts, effective the end of school year, Teresa Phillips, effective August fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Tina Hoffman, effective August fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Mary Claire Clevinger, effective the end of the school year.
Is there a motion?
Some of- Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Should the board be concerned that we've had so many resignations lately? And could we get a breakdown of how many we've had this year compared to last year?
Yes. So as I said, this is the busy time of the month. So it, come, come to July meeting, I will give a very specific breakdown of, because by law, I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but July tenth is like the deadline in Ohio for certified teachers to make decisions. So after July tenth, the, it comes a board right. So, you know, and when you have teachers that choose to look to leave, for whatever reason, then we have a, we have a responsibility from a board to say, is this a good decision or a bad decision for our district? So typically, it's not a problem. But, so like I said, when we come to our July meeting, you know, I have obviously much more details to give you when it comes to the resignation side.
And you'll know as to why they are leaving.
Yes.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Classified staff resignations. Recommend the motion to approve the following classified staff resignation, as shown in Exhibit, Exhibit Z. That's Victoria Navara, effective six five, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Supplemental resignation. Recommend the motion to approve the following supplemental resignation, as shown in Exhibit AA. Tim Flaherty, Assistant High School Football Coach.
Is there a motion?
Some of- Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Certified staff hire. Recommend the motion to hire the following certified staff for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, pending verification, satisfactory credentials, and BCI/FBI checks as required. Anna Lipertor, Intervention Specialist, Step One, effective eight one twenty-two, and Joseph Welker, Language Arts, Step Two, effective eight one, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion?
On, on any of these hires, or any of these new positions, or are they-
They are not. Anna Lipertor is, is a replacement of Katie Unclesby, that you approved last meeting, for an MD position at Lexington Elementary for a multi-disabled unit. Very difficult to find. She spent her first year in Alliance. She was offered jobs in four districts and chose Marlin because she wants to be here. Which was very big and strong for us. Jill Welker has been a tutor with us for two years, and will be stepping into a language arts role that will be vacated coming at the middle school.
Is that Melissa's?
It is.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Classified Sapphire. Recommend the motion to approve the following staff for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, pending verification, satisfactory credentials, and BCI/FBI checks as required. Steph Stevenson, four-hour cook, effective five twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, Randy Dutchen Jr., summer custodian, and Lori Ro, and Lori Yost, payroll as needed at fifty dollars per hour.
Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Uh, supplementals. Recommend the motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year supplemental possession, positions, as presented in Exhibit BB.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Discussion?
These are just, so last month, you did some supplementals, so this is the time of year. So everybody has a supplement. Our district basically has to reapply every year. Then we determine what supplementals we bring back, what we need from there. So it typically, as the May meeting happened, that's a bulk of those. A lot of those are fall, then we get additional ones that are coming now in, in June. We'll have a few more in July, and then obviously, we move forward, there'll be some for the spring sports. But that's, you know, we, that's, we try to keep track of those this way, in those sheets. That's why we kind of, I put this together this way, it makes it a little easier for you guys to see the steps and where they're at.
So these are the band manager, class advisors, student council advisors, National Honor Society advisors, things of that nature?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion?
These are all contract, and the, and the teacher's certified contract.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
Okay. The final one, under personnel. Recommend the motion to approve the following summer staff help. Morgan Swaggard for Horticulture.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mark? Discussion?
Morgan helps Mr. Tanner in the hort building, and is strictly paid through any profits he makes from selling flowers throughout the school year. That's how she's paid, or paid.
Great. Okay. Uh, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
The next Board of Education meeting will be held June twenty-third, here in the high school DLZ.
July twenty-first.
July, what did I say?
June twenty-third.
Sorry. I looked up there. Sorry. July twenty-first. At seven PM here. Okay? And we'll need a motion to go into executive session.
Can we set a work session date by chance?
Yes. Work session.
I don't know, whatever. Or would you like me to email you to kind of-
Well, I got a question on the board meeting and work session. We'll, do we, is Dr. Mike planning on attending those, both? Do we know?
We, we currently know that Doctor's, Dr. Mike's leave ends July first. And obviously, we're in the Fourth of July weekend. I know that he has some vacation time coming to him, so I, I can't say for sure within those first few weeks of July if he will be tending. I can reach out to him after the first and find out. Obviously, it would be his work session to lead, and if he's unavailable, then it would be my-
So you're intending on?
I would be attending the work session either way, so, you know, with him. So it, sending that work session date would be, Dr. Mike's would be, he'd be the leader of that work session. Obviously, he's not there, that would fall upon myself, and Patty, we would go ahead and take the lead on that, if that's-
As far as board meeting goes, we don't know at this point. It sounds like you're gonna be there for sure.
Correct.
In his role. So that'd be accurate.
Needs be. Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
I, I don't, like Josh, I think you said you had a vacation, you're gonna be gone.
Yeah. Any day after the twelfth.
So any day after the twelfth, so it's just really-
But you want the work session before the meeting?
Preferably. You don't have to. I mean, it's just, I just said July, I mean, it doesn't have to be, but yeah.
We could do it the Thursday before, if everybody, the fourteenth.
I'll be gone.
You're gone?
You get back on Tuesday, John.
Yeah.
That weekend.
The whole weekend? I mean, you're gonna be gone on the fourteenth?
I could do it on Tuesday.
Yeah. I'll be out of town till the, till the end of the weekend.
Are you gone on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wednesday the thirteenth?
Yeah. It's my birthday, I'm not doing a work session.
I went to your birthday. How about the Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Or, or we could do it before the board meeting, if that would-
No, that's, that's a long night.
It takes so long.
Okay.
Yep.
The nineteenth?
Tuesday, July nineteenth? Do you want, we could start a little earlier, maybe, or no?
Five o'clock be okay?
Is five okay, everybody?
Or you wanna go?
Yeah.
Okay, Kathy?
I'm good with it.
Okay. At five PM on Tuesday, July nineteenth.
And we'll just do it here at DLZ?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Good. Okay. So there's, uh, we need a motion for the Arlington Local School District.
I just said some, you said we need a motion, I said some move, sorry.
Can I read it? Uh, Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revise Code one twenty-one point two-two G one to consider the employment evaluation of a public employee. All matters discussed in this executive session are designated to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revise Code one zero-two point zero-three B because of the status of the proceedings and/or circumstances under which the information will be received, and preserving its confidentiality is necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Following executive session, no action is expected. Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Jeez. Yikes. Okay. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Passed, five zero.
We're entering eight, at eight nineteen PM. We're entering eight, at 8:19 PM.
Wait Ben.
He said yes.
Okay, we're to clear it out of executive session at 9:25. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call or roll?
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass. Five seconds.
Adjourned, thank you.